I call the planning commission meeting to order for Thursday, March tenth, two thousand sixteen. Do you have a call?
Chairman, you have a call, but you're ready to go.
Thank you. I'm going to address public comments on item two as we go through them, so we will give you an opportunity when we bring up the issue to speak at that time rather than doing it at the beginning of the panel. Item four is discussion and possible action. Oh, three. Approval of the minutes for February eleventh, two thousand sixteen.
We approve.
Motion's been made, seconded. Do you have a vote, please?
Sir, motion to approve minutes for February eleventh, two thousand sixteen. All in favor, please, just want to say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There you go. Thank you very much.
Item four is discussion and possible action on application two thousand sixteen dash two zero one one three five three eight concerning a request to rezone property located at eleven oh six West Noble Avenue from R two to C one.
Yes, sir. The applicant is here tonight. They are, they have been dislocated from their original store on the south side of Highway thirty-three due to the ODOT expansion and looking for a new opportunity. Our C one zoning criteria is neighborhood commercial, which for this type of use would obviously make sense. Any concern regarding lighting or anything like that can obviously be addressed by our chief building inspector as well. So, we have, again, the applicant is here. We have five signee, people signed in for public comment. Or is anyone here for public comment regarding this issue?
Yes.
Okay. If you don't mind just joining us right down here. And please state your name.
John Riddle.
John Riddle. Thank you. Mr. Riddle, you're here to make comment about the rezoning of eleven oh six West Noble Avenue? I'd love to turn it over to you.
We're just concerned about turning it into a commercial property there in a residential district. There's, those houses on that block are residential and a number of them have been getting a lot of improvements building up that community in there. And I don't think it's going to help any of the property values or any of the value of those houses by putting a commercial property right in the middle of the residential properties. That was our concern.
John, do you live on that block?
We actually own a property on that block.
West Street?
Yes.
Is that where you're picking the rental or?
It's a property on the opposite corner. It's got the one with the white fence around it, the...
Oh, opposite, like the, the north?
Further west.
The same block?
Eleventh and Noble.
The north, northwest corner?
Your address, sir?
Northeast corner. It's eleven twenty-four, eleven twenty-four West Noble.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And like I say, that house was, was...
Oh, wait a minute. The northeast corner is, is the one that is applied, right?
This one's applying. This is the house he's talking about.
Oh, you're in the northwest corner of the block, right?
I just rehabbed that house.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're on the northwest corner.
I'm at the northeast corner of the, of Eleventh and Noble. But I understand what you're saying. Got you.
Oh, this is where it's applying. This is where his house is.
Yeah, we had, we had...
South wash.
I worked around. It's this way, right?
Yes.
Wait, okay. There we go.
This is...
There you go. There's a car wash.
You got it.
And he has, oh, the property on the corner?
I have the...
And these two homes have just been rehabbed, right?
Yes.
And you've just been rehabbing, that used to be a daycare center, didn't it?
They had one of the daycare centers on the basement.
On the whole corner?
Yeah. Of course.
And I want to remind our commissioners that because this is technically considered an issue under public comment, there's not a whole lot of back and forth that can be had according to the meetings act. But we can obviously hear Mr. Riddle's concern and make note of that as it already has been in the meeting.
This is the house I'm talking about. This is how it looks now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and it's been completely rehabbed.
It was a two-bedroom, one-bath. The basement was unfinished. We completely rehabbed the house from top to bottom, went down to the studs. It's all new electric, plumbing, heat and air. It's now a four-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath and nineteen hundred square feet. And it's, I have pictures if you'd like to see it. It's been completely redone.
The two next to that around the corner have been redone since last year as well.
Yes. Yeah, the next two houses on Eleventh Street have also just been refurbished this past year as well. So, like I say, that's why I was asking about when Banner School was going to get cleaned up to really help that whole community over there.
Correct.
Because it's killing them over there because who wants to vote across the street from that, so?
Correct. And while I have a moment, I just want to address, for rezoning issues, the planning commission makes recommendation to the city council. So, this issue will be heard again in a public forum on Tuesday night downstairs in the second floor of council chambers at seven...
Regardless of our recommendation.
Yes, regardless, but they will hear the recommendation at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Riddle.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else other than the applicant here for this topic? Do you want to come talk about your application? Okay. Okay. So, with that, obviously, the applicant is here. If you have any questions, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to hear public comment and a little bit of detail about that. Again, the business is being relocated from the south side of the street because of the ODOT project with the bridge. It will be contributing sales tax as a commercial property, but I will obviously entertain a motion at any time or try and answer any questions that you have.
Is this a purchase? Is this, is this land going to be purchased depending on the...
The contract is pending.
Contract pending or whether the zoning is changed?
Correct. And again, our C one neighborhood commercial is kind of the lightest version of commercial operations that we allow.
Can we ask a question?
I'm sorry.
I would just make a comment. I'm sure the rest of commissioners have checked these things out. A C one neighborhood goes to our planning commission folder here is the same as a, as a R two. There's an awful lot of things that can be built there. Everything from a auto supply store to whatever. What is being considered to be built there and how do we know that it will stay that over a good period of time? I realize it's on a corner and right across from a car wash, but there's a tremendous amount of items that could be built there which may or may not be conducive to residential.
Well, I think you take that chance with anything you do, Mr. Riddle. That's my group behind it. I mean, if they say they're going to put a convenience store in and then it takes...
There's going to be a gas station?
Five years.
Do we know that?
That's the...
Convenience.
It is going to be like the...
Obviously, we don't exactly have a, you know, the ability to say one hundred percent what it will be, but that, I mean, that's what the applicant has intended, so.
Did we have any otherbody, anybody else return you anything on the...
We had one email comment in, not in support, and then we had one local property owner that says that.
So, we had an additional one not in support?
He was, we had one on both sides of this issue.
So, we had two without...
Oh, one property owner in favor?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that we group, send a recommendation for approval on this item to the council.
Motion's been made to approve. Do I hear a second?
Guys, for lack of a second.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we disapprove the request. We have a, we have a homeowner and we've had somebody else, and it's a nice neighborhood and we understand the, the issue of the applicant and we certainly understand that, but it's a nice neighborhood and they're trying to upgrade the neighborhood and I'd like to see it steadily. So, I'd make a motion that we deny the application.
The first motion, guys, for lack of a second. Second motion's been made to deny. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made, seconded. We have a roll call. A vote, please, Mr. Riddle.
Motion to make a recommendation to disapprove the rezoning. All in favor, please, just want to say an aye.
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 All, all opposed? Please probably say an no.
No.
Okay. Motion to disapprove will go before the city council on Tuesday night at seven.
Item five is discussion and possible action on application two thousand fifteen dash two zero one one three three six eight concerning a request to approve the preliminary plat of English Barn.
And of course, this is the same preliminary that you saw last month. Applicant is here again. We obviously sent out the public notice. Any questions, comments, or concerns? At this point, I do want to make note that it is just the preliminary. We will see the final plat at a future meeting.
When will we see the drainage plan? That's what I asked for last night.
I hadn't heard that you had asked for a drainage plan.
I did.
We will probably, we will see that, we will see that...
For this reason, I motioned to take the item.
We will see that with the final plat. Our engineer is aware of it and is working with them right now.
But it has to come back to us again.
Yeah, for the final plat.
For the final, yes.
All right.
I would entertain a motion.
So move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded and approved.
All in favor, please, just want to say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carried.
Item six is discussion and possible action on application two thousand sixteen dash two zero one one three five eight three concerning an appeal to the residential guidelines imposed design for property to be located at thirteen twenty West Lakeview Drive.
The final page of your packet that you have before you, the difference in this, where it doesn't meet our design guidelines is, of course, the garage being located in front of the primary facade of the residence. You know, it just kind of sticks out more than anything else. You know, in my opinion, I think that obviously we see, we can see that this is a plan that was built online and all likelihood the applicant has not ever met or had really any communication with their architect, and they didn't understand that, you know, what our design guidelines show. I, staff's opinion is that it is, you know, contributing to our current neighborhood and our current residential standards as well.
Is anyone here like to address the board regarding this?
And this one actually did not go out for public comment because of, it was just an appeal, so it didn't have to go out.
Having, having looked at the particular location, I mean, this is a very rural area and the other homes in the area, I don't see how this would be a, a problem.
I concur with that.
Is this, is this the elevation?
If it was infill housing in the city and you were dealing with a lot of...
We didn't even see another house.
That's my point.
Yeah.
And it's a very attractive home, so I have absolutely no problem.
Is this, is this indeed the elevation? Is this...
Yeah, I would move to...
I'm saying this.
I'm voting second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please, just want to say a vote.
Distraction, thank you. Is this indeed the elevation? Is this what we're looking at? Is this, is this what's going to be there?
That's the plan, yes.
If you know the area, it's rural and it's, I think it, I think it would be, would be a nice addition to the area. I would, I too concur on that.
Do we have a vote, please?
Motion was made and seconded to approve. All in favor, please, just want to say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There you go. Motion carried.
Item seven, discussing, discussion and possible actions to recommend addition of dirt bike use to Guthrie zoning code.
All right. So, this is kind of a unique situation in that we have an item that is being proposed for commercial use in town, but the item itself is, the use itself is not found in our zoning code. And so, it's not the fact that the zoning is incorrect or the fact that the zoning is correct for that matter, but just the simple fact that our zoning code does not address this. And of course, it is dirt bike use. I have attached, I've included a comment that was made from someone that had some concerns about this. I do believe the applicants are here. I guess I'll open it up to public comment at this time. Is there anyone who wants to make comment that's not representing the applicant?
I'm not representing the applicant and I can make a comment.
Okay, we'd like you to go ahead.
The dirt bike...
Give us your name.
My name is Sandy Freeman.
Okay.
The dirt bike park is beat away from my property line, and I don't want him to be able to open it up to major races and major public. Him riding himself and a couple of friends I deal with, I don't like it, but it's his property. But opening it up to a motocross commercial where he's charging entry fees, which he has a race coming up, which he is going to be charging entry fees and going to have a race, will bring tons of dust, tons of dirt, which it already does, and tons and tons of noise, which it already does. I don't, my property value will diminish greatly because of this. If I ever want to move, I won't be able to because it will, if anybody comes over and looks at my house, they can hear him riding on any given night. So, I just, I'd rather it not be, I'd rather it not happen.
Where's the swap table?
So, one oh two five East Roller Coaster is my address and it's directly behind my house.
I want to be very clear. We are talking about a use specifically, not a application at this point. And so, we are addressing the fact whether a dirt bike use should be included in the zoning code and if so, what zoning criteria should it fall under? Is it commercial? Is it industrial? Is it residential for that matter? I mean, so, we're not talking about an application specifically at this point. We are talking about the use itself. I just want to clarify that.
But the use itself has caused him to be able to get a race that's going to happen on his property on April fifteenth and sixteenth, which is going to affect my home greatly.
Is there anything to prevent him from doing this the way the codes are right now?
Current zoning, yes.
Again, it's not an application.
I understand, but the current zoning?
It is not addressed in zoning.
Okay.
But can he legally do this right now?
Because we do, because we do not specifically outline that he can technically now.
What's it, what's it zoned at now?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Where he, where a dirt bike course is being built or used right now is zoned in, the land is zoned commercial.
He's in C two.
C two?
C two.
He has him in C two. He has porta potties out there. He's already built it.
I want to, I just want to stress, I understand Commissioner Argon asking about that, but because it's not an application, we have to treat this as the use itself, not anything more, nothing less. I mean, it's very restrictive on what, because it's just simply not an application.
It's not so specific.
I don't understand, we can, I don't understand, we can discuss it if we don't know the zoning. That's, that's a little bit difficult for me to understand that feeling.
You would, you are looking at a topic at this point. Should you want to include a use that is not included in the Guthrie zoning code, you can make a recommendation to include it in the zoning code.
It is definitely not in any of our codes at this time.
It is not in any code at this time.
Freeman, thank you.
Thank you very much.
What does that mean exactly? May I ask? Can I ask that?
It just simply means that he can, he is, we do not give authority for someone to operate that use right now.
I'm Elizabeth Taylor.
Just listening and...
Which state?
Oh, I'm Debbie Taylor, and I'm a resident here of Guthrie and City Limits. And I'm just concerned that if it's, if there isn't a change that it, and live, in living in City Limits, if you allow future use of going in different areas of the city, I would hate that, that we would have to be concerned about our residences in other areas of the city that's in City Limits. If it's allowed to happen here, it's going to be allowed to happen somewhere, and the noise would concern me and the fact that it would reduce the, the value of our land. So, that's something I think we should, I mean, I would say as a citizen that, that concerns me.
So, I know that this is a little bit of a...
Twist?
Oddity.
I guess the oddity would be if we listed or we don't list it.
Because we...
Do we want to speak?
Because we don't have an application, we, we just need to simply address anyone who's interested in the, in the topic themselves. And so, I believe the neighbor of Ms. Freeman is here tonight, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. And then someone else asked to speak. I think that we just continue to hear different thoughts regarding the matter. Again, this is, it's such an oddity because it's not an application. It's more of a general discussion at this point. So, Chairman, whoever you'd like to address first. You've got someone to your left that has a dirt bike use that is not an applicant, and then you've got someone else behind me that is requesting to speak as well, so...
Okay. Would anyone would like to come up first? We need to call a station.
I'm the actual owner of the property.
Okay, if you come up here and state your name for us, we would like to get you on the camera.
My name is Mark Miller. And I own the property that is in question. We want to start this, I have obtained a couple investors that would like to go in with me. We're trying to do this the right way, and I do know that, you know, dusting always is a concern. We've purchased water trucks to keep the dust down, trying to get, you know, porta potties and stuff set up to keep the facilities clean. They will be in a gated area that is not accessible unless you come through my gates, so she shouldn't have to worry about people coming onto her property or anything like that. So, we're trying to work with our timelines and the flyer that I handed out does outline the times of use that will be going on from eight to four on Saturday, and Sunday will be eight to four.
Should you have...
Should, should I, yeah, should I have. And the date is still, it's just, this is what's set up, so, you know, this is just the plan they have. So, I'm not trying to carry it into the wee hours of the night. I'm not trying to put up lights. I'm not trying to do, you know, too bad. I'm trying to keep it at a reasonable time, you know, it's kind of hard today. Like I said, we have purchased, you know, quite a bit of equipment to keep noise levels down. I've left trees in certain places to try to, you know, like that.
Do you want to speak more to the fact about what, why you think that this commission should recommend adding a dirt bike use?
Exactly. The, I'm an avid motorcyclist. I travel around, you know, states everywhere. I go to a lot of these races. These races do bring in revenue from the city, you know, being at hotels, restaurants, convenience stores, you know, they're going to be staying, so these people are going to be coming in from out of town. You're going to get them from Missouri, Kansas, Arkansas. I mean, there's a big following to this stuff, you know, and they will be coming in and spending money with the city, and that's basically what I'm here to address. I would like to, you know, bring in revenue for the city and let people see what Guthrie's all about. So, and we've actually included, you know, Guthrie in the name of our location. I want people to know where it's at, you know, I'm trying to get the city involved in it as well. I mean, everybody's familiar with the Lazy E Arena crowd. This is basically an outdoor version of, I mean, these are the nicest people you're going to meet. They're not a rowdy crowd. It's a family-oriented, you know, organization. I got riders from four years old all the way to sixty-five, almost seventy years old that are still riding and enjoying young motorcycles. So, it's definitely a, a family affair. It's not just, you know, a bunch of hoodlums out riding bikes causing trouble. That's not what this is about. I mean, it's a professional, you know, organization that's put together.
Thank you, Mr. Riddle.
Your word?
Thank you, Mr. Riddle.
Can I rebuttal?
No, I'm so sorry.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to add a whole...
With someone else?
Mark Miller's, that, I own this land prior, where you live, I built the house.
Oh, okay, cool.
It's on six acres, if I'm not mistaken. Marx is on twenty-seven, but up to I thirty-five, and you have all the noise from I thirty-five, you know, which is very loud.
Most of the noise we're taking down now.
Yeah.
Do you want to speak to why you feel or don't feel that a dirt bike use should be included in the zoning criteria?
Well, that's what I'm trying to get at, you know, but you got to understand that there's a, quite a bit of land. She has quite a bit, there's quite a bit of land out there, you know, nothing else is around. I think it would be good for the city.
Okay, thank you.
You know, it's going to bring revenue in, it's going to bring a whole group that is not aware of Guthrie, you know? And then, like I said, this, this is a family event. People show up with their little kids. I mean, you'll see four-years-old riding on the track out there, and you'll see sixty-year-olds. They'll have, you know, different races for different age groups. And I just think it needs to be considered, you know, you could go out there and put in a commercial salvage yard or whatever. This is only one weekend that we're talking about. It's not every weekend deal and races.
And again, we're not, we're not talking about a specific application, so I just want to clarify that we're talking about the use of dirt bikes.
Right. On twenty-seven acres.
Well, basically, we'll sell about anywhere in the, in the corporate limits of the city.
Well, see, when I grew up, there was not...
Well, if it's a used thing, it has to apply...
Well, today it is. Right, I understand.
So, any C two's, if we change this, would be open to this interpretation?
No.
Right, no.
No, this would be special.
That's incorrect. You can dedicate, one, if you want to adopt this use, and what zone you would want to put it in. You could, you could, look at your, I mean, you could put it in everything from agricultural, residential, commercial, or industrial.
But whatever group you put that in would apply to everybody in that group.
Right. Yes, the, the use would apply for that...
So, it's basically for the whole town.
Exactly. Exactly, obviously...
So, any commercial, if, if we made it for the C two, then any C two could do it.
Good.
I would entertain a motion.
You can also, sorry, you can also, you see that some uses are allowable through special permit in certain zoning criterias as well. You can also put the, you can make a recommendation for city council to require a special permit so that planning commission along with city council get to host public hearings to discuss these matters on a case-by-case basis for a specific zoning industry. Is there anyone else present to talk about this issue?
Is this something that we, we want to take up in our workshop, discuss a little more, a little more in detail or not? And I'm sure this is something new, dirt bikes, it, it's not like they came in in the fifties or something, something in the last fifteen, twenty years or so that have become popular. And it's certainly something that I think we should address, but I'm just wondering if we should have a little more investigation into it. And is it, is it necessary to come up with an answer tonight?
Well, he has a...
That's the determination of the commission.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's the determination of the commission.
I mean, there's, there's no anything, no way anything we come up with tonight is going to stop to be...
Our summary table lists are future discussion, not trying to make a jump in here and make an immediate decision.
Motion's been made.
You know, some of the things I'd be curious about, like in these other cities, I mean, are these, are, is the actual race in the city limits of Stillwater or Miss Kansas?
The one in Stillwater I know is not, I think it's...
It's not in the city limits and Carthage is in there.
That I've found in the world. It could be, it's over, it's, you know, north of the Tumbleweed. I don't know if that's Stillwater City Limits or not. It's on Country Club Road and Stillwater, which is basically borderline of Stillwater City Limits.
Mr. Chairman, we got a motion on the table.
Some of these other tracks, they are right in that town.
I want to clarify one thing. I want to clarify one thing. If we motion, if you make a motion to table, it automatically goes on the next regularly scheduled meeting. And so automatically, without any doubt, doesn't matter how dead or alive that meeting is, this one is scheduled for the next, I believe it's April 14th. So that's what motion to table does.
We're also supposed to be having a workshop here one of these times.
Yes, we, we try to.
And this is scheduled for April 16th. And this is scheduled for April 16th. This event.
That, that poster does represent an event scheduled for April 16th, yes.
You're talking about, we would have a meeting two days before the event?
Technically, without, I mean, to look at it this way, you are making a recommendation to city council to adopt this into the zoning code?
Or not.
Or, or not to adopt this into the zoning code. If you choose to not make a recommendation, it'll go before city council. If you choose to make it a recommendation, it'll go before city council. And so in all likelihood, April, April 18th would be the first time that city council could actually make a vote to make any decision, should you table it tonight.
But the event can still proceed if we do nothing, right? Cannot proceed.
Cannot. Because the, the use is not allowed inside of city limits right now.
Pretty short. Can I make a comment or does it close now?
If you would like to make a public comment about this specific issue regarding whether or not the dirt bike use should be allowed in, you're more than welcome to.
I hope I can clarify something for you here. My name is Michael Yellenbeck, and the only thing that I could think of in the city code for ordinances would be the noise ordinance, because there is a city noise ordinance that would be broken because it is in the city limits. Now, I like to see revenue come into the city. I personally, I would like to see the track, but for, just for your guys' recommendation, there is a noise ordinance that would be broken, and, I don't know, I think that's the, what was it? Well, that's all I, that's the real amazing thing.
Thank you for coming.
There is a motion.
No questions, yeah.
There was a motion to table to the next meeting. It has been made and seconded, so motion to table, all in favor, please, just one by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. Motion, motion will be tabled to the April meeting.
Item 8's request for future items of discussion. Dr. Augen?
We've got, we're wondering, a little bit of a, a little bit of a time restraint here with this particular little situation that just happened. I don't know if we can, we have, we were supposed to get a little, little group meeting here.
Staff made an effort and we weren't able to get enough people to attend. We, we made an effort and we could not get a quorum to attend.
For the, for table, round two?
Correct.
With all due respect to the gentleman, you made a nice presentation. I would like to see us somehow be able to discuss this a little further. If there's a noise problem, perhaps that's said and done. I wasn't aware of that, appreciate that gentleman bringing that up. Do any of us know that? Do you know that yet? Are you familiar with that particular?
Not familiar with that.
That particular ordinance. I might ask Mr. Cody here how we can expedite a little bit.
The only thing that I remotely recall that reminds me of this is the race cars at the fairgrounds in Oklahoma City. And, you know, that was a really established track that had been there for years and years, and the neighbors went crazy trying to get it.
Let's make sure that we're talking about future items that the commission wants to discuss.
Okay. Yeah, I was going back to the last thing. Sorry.
Do you have anything?
No.
Mr. French?
Nope.
Alright, we'll move on to item nine, staff comments.
Again, sorry for the intimate atmosphere tonight. We got relocated due to another conflict. We will make an attempt again to get a quorum of members up for a workshop. We tried a few weeks ago and weren't able to make that happen, but it is still definitely on our radar, so look for that in the coming weeks. With that, thank you all very much for being here. Certainly a well-attended event tonight.
Thank you, Cody. Item 10 is the commission comment.
I have a couple.
Mr. French?
Number one, I'd like to know, I'm sure half the town would, how much money did the city get from Mumford and what happened to it and what's it been spent on?
Okay.
And secondly, and I mentioned this earlier in the evening, there's U-Haul trucks parked on the street which remain there 24/7, which I don't think should be allowed. And if whoever owns them can't put it on their own site, then they need to find some place else to put them.
We'll make sure that code enforcement is, that's brought to code enforcement's attention.
Thank you, Mr. French. Mr. Coffin? Mr. Chapel?
Yeah, I just want to bring up the fact that in the last week, actually in the last four or five days, I've gotten three phone calls from property owners on North Wentz, near Wentz College. And I think the last, and this has to do with chain link fencing. There was a home several years ago and that built a chain link fence that was built over the sidewalk, and of course, this was debated at city hall about, you know, we, we do have a chain link ordinance, I guess, but it was decided, it's my understanding, that chain link was only prohibited in, in new construction in front of a home. And then I was told by the city, well, I was never told by the city attorney, but it was the city attorney's opinion that if someone wanted to put chain link up in their front yard, that they could, as long as they could see chain link in somebody else's front yard, which I thought was, that's the honest to God truth, okay? And anyway, this home on the corner of College and Wentz put up a chain link fence which was over the sidewalk line. The city did require them to move it back, and then a home next door to them was getting ready to put up chain link fence, and it was my understanding that the city at the time talked them into putting up a, oh, like a white picket fence. And it, as, as I drove by there, it always, you know, it was a perfect example of how much better the white picket fence slipped than the chain link. But I guess this week, they took down the white picket fence and put up chain link. So I got calls from people across the street that were wondering, wondering how that could happen. I'm just bringing that up because in the past, we've talked about some fencing ordinances. I know that it's in the ordinances that you can't put chain link fence in front of your house, but it's still happening. And, and, and since this has been brought to my attention, I would bet in the past six years, there's probably only been two or three homes in, in the whole city that have put chain link fence up. And it just seems like to me, when you're, you know, when we're trying to keep, you know, the aesthetics of our neighborhood and try, trying to keep Guthrie looking like a little Victorian city, that, you know, if that original house on the corner had been required, not, hadn't, they hadn't let them do that, this issue wouldn't be reoccurring every three or four years. So for, that's my comment for what it's worth. I don't even know if that has any direction, but in the ordinance, it says that there's no chain link fence, and it's my understanding, in the front of, of a home. And anyway, for what it's worth, I got several, in fact, I got three calls from the same person until I called them back.
Thank you, Mr. Chapel. Mr. Augen?
No.
I have none. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sure, move.
Thank you.
You're great.